To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First order of business, the agenda is before us. Is there any additions or deletions by the fellow boardroom members staff?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to remove the sheriff's monthly report. That will be presented from now on at the second, at our next meeting and from here on out at the second meeting of the month. Due to them losing an IT person, they will be getting their statistics a little later in the month, so we'll put that out from now on at the second meeting.
Any other changes? Hearing none, the agenda then will stand with the one change. If anybody wants to speak tonight, the only thing we ask you to do is sign in the signing sheet in the back of the room, so that this officer has your full name and address spelled correctly for the record. First order of business is, since there is nothing on the sheriff's report, is there anybody in the audience here specifically for the sheriff's office? Hearing none, roll call please.
Thank you. Item number one.
We didn't have the monthly report. Good evening, everyone. We didn't have the monthly report, but we still wanted to address before with a couple things that we had going on. Just a couple of things that I'm currently working on. We've had some activity in the northeast end of the township where America Sheds getting broken into, as well as a couple residential burglaries in the southwest end of the township. So again, we want to remind the residents to, if you see something reported, if you see something suspicious, let us know. And this week, Lieutenant Springer and I are attending crisis intervention training to deal with mentally ill individuals. Kind of one of the touch base would be that, because you didn't have a monthly report.
Thank you. Unfinished business number one is a resolution, whereas the trustees have held a public hearing on July 28, 2015, for the 2016 Plain Township Alternative Tax Budget, and whereas the Plain Township Order Trustees continued the hearing at 2016, August 11. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Plain Township Order Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adopt the 2016 Alternative Tax Budget for Plain Township as presented, and authorize the Plain Township Police Office to submit two copies of this budget to the Stark County auditor on or before August 20.
I will sub move. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Okay, item number two, there has been much discussion about hens at the last several meetings, being owned by residents on lots of one acre or less. And I've done some follow-through with the Stark County Health Department, following up with our neighbors who do own hens, to see if they have received many phone calls. They have stated they get phone calls about all the animals, not in particular hens or chickens, but they did make some recommendations to any language that would go forth to our zoning commission in the future, and I'll touch on that in a minute. So on page two of what you have before you, I have added that proper integrative pest management needs to be practiced, and also in regards to animal waste being properly disposed. The health department did say if they received a call about smell, they would investigate, not due to the smell, but to see if the waste was being properly disposed of. And so the, there has been a lot of discussion about this, but this, the next step really is, it's not something that the Board of Trustees votes on one. This is something that is governed in our zoning text. And when I was the interim zoning director, our zoning commission did receive people coming in and asking about hens, did ask for some language to look at under one acre. This is completed language. Now, Mr. Ferrara can schedule a meeting with the zoning commission to look at this language, but it's certainly not anything that the Board of Trustees would vote on, it's something governed in our zoning text.
It doesn't, it still often only comes to us at the end.
At the end of the process, it will come to the board.
Largest point we can add there.
Correct.
I object.
Yes, but it doesn't start with the Board, it starts with the zoning commission.
And all the phone calls could have, if it was passed.
If it were passed, yeah. It was before the zoning, it was before the zoning commission one other time, and they did not pass the language. So I think there's a different number or two, but it's something that they may choose to revisit, or they may choose not to. But I think the language has been shored up in regards to pest control, also keeping any such coops, the health department said 50 feet away from a well, if a homeowner owns a well. And it's, we've done as much as language on our end as we can.
Eric, I have one question, and number three of this, number D, letter D. Wherever violates this section will be guilty of a minor misdemeanor.
We got statutory authority, but was, hasn't passed yet.
No, what would happen there?
Criminal languages, correct?
Right. A lot of times, statutorily, that kind of thing is provided for. In this particular instance, we wouldn't have that in there. Even though probably statutorily, if it went as far as it sometimes does, that might be, because it provides for it in higher device code, we wouldn't put the language in there because we're actually, we don't make any laws, as you know, that provide criminal penalties.
So that couldn't stay in there?
No, that would come out, but it doesn't mean that there wouldn't be an associated penalty with it provided by the higher device code, it just wouldn't be provided by us. If that makes sense.
So what would you do, just insert the?
I'd just take D out.
Code section?
I'd take D out altogether, because it's going to be whatever the code provides for, depending on how far down the line we get to enforcement. I think it's in there because it could be a violation, but it wouldn't be, I think we even got some in another zone text that they can stay that, I'm not sure. It's certainly not because we provide for this, because we want it by code. Depending again, as to how you choose to enforce and elect or give a violation.
I mean, what does it need to?
Does it not need to be?
So then I'll remove D, review it one more time with Eric, and then we'll move it on to Mr. Ferrara. And that ends unfinished business. Thank you. Item number one before you is a resolution for the fossil law.
Hold on one second. There'll be a portion for you if you have any questions when we get to the end of the agenda, for public speaking.
So number one of our new business is the fossil laws.
Also move. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And then item number two is the Run Now, Wind Later, which I love the name of phrase, and we have Steve Mears here to talk about it this evening. And the board members, Mr. Flex, our sheriff's office, and Highway Superintendent Chief, you all have a copy of the packet.
Good evening, nice to see you again. I'm Steve Mears, I represent Run Camp Lake, which is a 501(c)(3) charity that puts on this event for families in and around Stark County. What we have before us here tonight is a, we received a request by Jervasi Vineyard to present a fall fitness event that starts and finishes on their property. And with a clear mind toward minimal disruptions on Saturday at 10:00 in the morning, we've confined this route entirely to the Stark Parks Trail, with the exception of a .14-mile area from Jervasi's entrance to the trailhead, Middle Branch Trailhead, prior to the railroad tracks. And we need to cross the street a couple of times. Really not rocket science here, trying to make it as minimally invasive as we can, but still put on a nice event. So as you see on the first page, we participate 500, our events draw at least 500 every time. We're starting at 10:00 a.m. to accommodate Jervasi's staff, because they want to have their bistro and their crush house open for the folks when they finish, so they can make a reservation, redeem their coupon, is one of the runner amenities that they have. On the second page of your packet there, you can see where we have the, where we have the street crossings, and we indicate that we will most likely require four deputies and supervisors to monitor those crossings. We did, we did a very successful event on May 2nd, in cooperation with the Stark County Sheriff's Department. It was called Run Now, Wind Later. This is the bookend, or I'm sorry, it was called Sweat Now, Wind Later, because it had a mile-long kayak paddle, and then they ran the trail back to Jervasi. So this was Jervasi's request that we bookend it in the fall with Run Now, Wind Later, which was purely a run. We will staff this course with volunteers and folks React, making sure that everybody's safe. Those of you who have participated in my events in the past know that we put on a first-class show. We do what we say we're going to do, we clean up after ourselves. And like I said, we hope to be minimally invasive. The one area here, I know this is all Stark Parks jurisdiction, we cleared it with the school district, we don't have any conflict with athletic events or anything like that, because we do have to cross the driveway. Rob, we need to cross your driveway for a few minutes, and we'll react on that. So that's literally the only thing from the township that would play into this. We don't need barricades, we don't need road crew, we really don't need anything but, you know, four deputies and a supervisor, and we'll take care of everything else. And like I said, it'd be as good or better than we found it. And then the last page, just so you can see what the lineup is for all the different events we do, we're growing. We were one, and now we are seven events. And again, we're a charity, and everything benefits those folks that are representative of us. We just would respectfully request that you give us the okay to work with Major Oliver and the folks at the Sheriff's Department, and we get the green light to go ahead with this event. Questions?
I have one. Do you need to cross the street tonight, or are we going to have access to the park because we have reservations in that shelter all day?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, you can shoot gaps. And you know, we're behind the fire station, obviously, we know, Chief, that, you know, your guys are the flashing lights come first, so we'll respect that.
Do you have anything that needs a medical emergency or something down, communication wise to us?
We will have, not only the sheriff's deputies, but React is all radioed up as well, and it's kind of handy that you sit right in the middle of the course.
You basically have something doing half a mile away from this, you're going to take 10 minutes for us to go to get the call.
That won't happen. We'll have, we have course marshals that'll have cell phones, and they'll all call back to the central.
Lieutenant Springer, do you have any questions?
No, sir, but you should get on with me and be able to coordinate this.
Great, Mr. Lea, thanks, we'll do.
No, thanks, sir. I think thanks for coming, yeah, some of these phrases, love the names, it's cute.
Good, let's get a cap out of 2,500, and register as soon as we can. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And that's the end of new business.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number one, request for a resolution to authorize payment of planning warrants.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Officer number two is a request for a resolution to authorize payment of payroll. Second, discussion, hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
This officer number three is a request for a resolution to authorize payment of the following medical plans. Sub move, second, any discussion, hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And Mr. Lea?
Yes.
This officer number four is the financial report for the town, as well as June's reconciliation. Any questions? Chief, number five. This officer number five is a request for a resolution to enter into the agreement with the auditorium, but here and also to authorize payment. Sub move. Second, discussion, hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And then this officer number six is a request for a resolution to authorize transfers. Also move, second, any discussion, hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Next, which is this officer number four tonight. Thank you, Mr. Flex, we'll go to Mr. Rich, for Mr. Cable.
Thank you. Item number one, I just want to let the board know that myself, Chief Snyder, Mr. Isino, met with Mr. Kirkinson and Jeff Simmons over the Grove Street vacation, got a better understanding about what is being done there, emailed you a copy of our letters to the commissioners. We're all set for the Grove Vacation viewing that we'll all be attending, and then also the hearing that day. And the commissioners received those letters. And then item number two is the payment, a resolution for the payment to Worstler Brothers Landscaping for the comp posting in an amount not to exceed $2,775 for Fund 01A 26L.
Also move, second, discussion, hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Cable, we'll go to the fire department for Chief Snyder.
Yes, no, what is the monthly report? Item number two is a resolution, there's a 505(c)(6) authorized Plain Township Order Trustees, Stark County provides repair, secure the building, the structures, declare it insecure unsafe, and that's at the 28th and 11th Fairway, Alabama, East.
Sub move, second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Then item number three is a resolution to purchase, authorize the purchase and payment to Bullock's Fire Extinction Training System, not to exceed $6,000.
Sub move, second, discussion, hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Go to the roof department for Mr. Isino.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly report for July.
Anybody have any questions? Cable, go number two.
Item number two is a resolution to coast all township streets, there's no parking ban, on the speak-up signs in the corner, go up Panther Stakes, Strawberry Field Circle, Blossom Wood Circle, Songbird Circle, Sugar Grove Circle, Shede Grove Circle, and Chisen Drive.
Sub move, second, discussion. This is normal, this is what we do every year.
No, this is a new snow emergency ban that we've been going through.
Okay.
As we're just trying to tie up all the things that we're having problems with right now, we're having pretty close.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And item number three is a resolution to purchase 15W 40 motor oil from Macintosh Oil, not to exceed $2,200.
Sub move, second, discussion, hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, item number one is the monthly report for July 2015.
Chair, you have steam, you're not on the ride? I'm going to come to new business, I said. Tell me these are, I don't know that's supposed to help, but back there.
They were having problems with the hood, getting the hood for their cooking area, so I don't know if that's going to.
Cable, go number two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two are the, on the agenda is a resolution to declare items A through five as nuisance abatement.
I will sub move. Second, discussion, and that is two A through I? All right. Roll call please. Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
I do want to say that Mr. Ferrara got every single nuisance abatement cleaned up before our parks, buildings, and ground crew had to go in and clean them up from our last meeting. So he's just doing a phenomenal job. Our guys didn't have to go on one property and clean them up, so great job, Tom.
For public's understanding, I mean ultimately, these costs get incurred, they get attached to the tax duplicate, which means we've expect money that we can't use in other areas of the township. So essentially, we're finding assets that we're not going to see probably for six, if not 12 months, that's when those tax bills are paid, paid in full. So it really is a huge savings, especially when you compound this, you know, week after week, week after week. So I mean, we've had significant successes compared to maybe five and a half years since, I don't have that here, I'm sure the private gets back into that part, so it is truly representative of how effective you are.
Thank you. We ready for number three?
Yes.
Mr. President, item number three is an I-Works program update, just to let you know that the, we plan a startup date of Thursday, August 13th, that's this Thursday, and I believe the program will markedly improve the efficiency of the department. Just as a slightly, a small example, in the complaints department alone, right now, we have to go into an Excel program to list the complaint to get a number for it. Then we have to go into Adobe program to write out the complaint, and we have to change over to the Word program to write the letter to that complaint, and we go into a pictures program to print all the pictures. This I-Works program will move everything into one area and help us to maintain everything in a small area, but help us to be more efficient in getting it all together.
Thank you, Tom, from what we were talking earlier, if we have a historical perspective, so today Anthony owns a property, and a few years from now, I own the property, right? You can take a look at it regardless of who owned it, that parcel history is.
Yes.
So whether it's noise complaints at the sheriff's office, ends up having to address, the driver has the license, and all of that stuff, it's going to all be there.
It'll address every property by number, by property address, so we can look that up at it.
Including whatever building permits have gone out of his department too, so the permits will be tied, we'll tie into it too.
So let's change for air, we don't all need to send rushers. That's the end of our discussion. Thank you, Tom. Go to the parks department.
Thank you. Item number one is a monthly report. Item number two is a resolution to list bids for the 2015 Diamond Indoor Sports Complex Indoor Turf project. Bids were received from, for Everlong, three bids from them, as well as the Moats group, two bids from them, and are attached in the main part of the bids.
Also move, seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution, whereas the Plain Township Order Trustees has advertised for bids for the Diamond Indoor Sports Complex Indoor Turf project, now have it hereby resolved by the Plain Township Order Trustees, Stark County, to award the Diamond Indoor Sports Complex Indoor Turf project to Foreverlong Southwest, a cost of $99,899. And will authorize payment not to exceed the amount from Fund 01E 05.
I will sub move. Second, discussion. To clarify, this turf is close to 30, 30 years old, and it is absolutely atrocious. I've played on it, I mean, there's sections are stitched in, stitched in, and we probably will, I don't envision, gain some folks coming back, just because we're improving the playing surface.
You'll gain teams, you'll gain players. As a lover of soccer, and an all-plays soccer, I won't allow my daughter, who's a goalkeeper, to dive on that field, it's like diving on concrete. As you'll see, it's, there were bids that came in at 123, 112, 113, 99 is right where Rob and I thought it would come in, and Rob can talk about the durability, but I want to talk financially for a moment. This is money that I've had set aside from the state tax dollars for the last several years, that has been set in this fund and has sat here for this project. So I'm glad that we finally are bidding out and replacing that, because I think you're going to see teams come back, and it's a safety issue, too. And I'll let Rob talk on that, but I want you to know, and as the board has seen in previous budgets, that money has been sitting there for this specific purpose.
Rob, what is the timeline for? Once contract's signed, I think they have to begin work within 10 days, because the work has to be completed earlier than October 27th of this year, which will have it done before we open our door for the opening of the season.
Will you explain the type of turf it is for the board?
Pretty hard to fact that we've updated it.
I promise you, we'll be funding that marketing promotion this season. The idea of the durability, when you deal with turf, you have to take into account weather and lighting and all of those things, most turf pieces have to go through, ours don't, we don't use it year-round, we use it for about five months a year. So where the claim of a 10 to 12-year guarantee holds up, you're looking at roughly 120 months, that gets stretched out because of the five months roughly a year, we do use it regularly, which makes that 12-year warranty into almost 25 years of usage before you have to replace it. We chose a turf that had a shorter blade and a thicker yarn count, so we did not have to go with any infill, because obviously it's easier to maintain, it's cleaner, it provides the fast game that the indoor game needs, be it lacrosse, soccer, or whatever. I mean, that's part of the reason people go indoors for that type of training. And it also allows for us to treat it in the event of injury or whatever, and constantly maintain it. The last piece that I'm pretty happy with is we made them come up with a shock pad underneath the turf, which we talked about, whether it's turf or not, it's on concrete, it's on concrete, so a half-inch shock pad will diminish a lot of those injuries that we get from people hauling on our turf.
And it included an ENS, right?
It did, it did.
Also move, any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis? Mr. G. Bassett?
Yes.
Keeping with the theme, item number four is a resolution for the contract to be signed for the project with Everlong.
I'll so move. Seconded, discussion?
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hobbs?
Yes.
Mr. G. Bassett?
Yes.
And finally, item number five is to give a raise of rate pay to Christine Taylor, our rest hands program instructor. Uh, just to give you guys an example, we started some years ago with two sessions, one in the fall, and spring, and now we're session every six weeks to the end of June, and they are always sold out to capacity.
I'll so move.
Seconded, any discussion? Hang on, hold on.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hobbs?
Yes.
Mr. G. Bassett?
Yes.
Thank you, good start, thanks.
Thank you, Rob, um, nothing for longer here, any, uh, no communications, we'll go to public speaks the first thing before we get to the other people in the audience, there is one person on the agenda, and that is Chester Stromsky for the Hollydale Landing District.
Good evening, uh, as I said, I am Chester Stromsky, uh, and I live at sixty-one twenty Hollydale, Tennessee. Back in April, I submitted a petition to establish Hollydale Avenue as part of the road, uh, as a lighting district, with the idea of equalizing the cost for the energy for the lights among the folks within that district. I think that part had been accomplished, but last week, uh, I believe it was last week, they changed the lights, the the light heads, and that was not really the intent. Uh, there was no intent to change the lights, the intent was just to equalize the cost. Well, in the process, the process of changing those lights out, we reduced lighting on the street. The uh, it's noticeably darker, uh, for example, the pole that my particular light is on is on the other side of the street, so you've got the roadway to the right of way, and then my light goes back just over two-hundred feet, and I could see my shed with that old light. I could barely see them in my driveway now, which is probably halfway from the property line in the front to the shed. And I'm I'm concerned because it's a security issue, and uh, and I'm wondering why were the light, the lights, the fixtures changed?
I think it was part of something that, um, I mean, Anthony, that we do a request last two weeks, I mean, two weeks earlier or the meeting before that?
Yeah, initially, when the petition goes through, A P goes out to assess the uh, the district, and they said, these, these aren't streetlights, not all of them are streetlights, so there's no uniform, and some of them are up against poles, and some of them are across the roadway, and they weren't gonna change those over into a lighting district because they're not streetlights. They came around and they, they found out that they would do that, and they proposed to us to to make them uniform like all the other lighting districts, and to uh, make them streetlights, and to change those streetlights, and that's, that's what was done, so there's, there's uniformity on Hollydale with the streetlights, and they're actually streetlights, because that's what, that's what the trustees have the ability to do, is to light the streets.
Unfortunately, none of that was explained at the time. If 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 it had been explained.
Well, nobody, nobody did that at the time.
Yeah.
A P came after the, after everything was.
We already know that.
Could um, since their, I guess, will be grandfathered in, Anthony, could they also put it back to what they had, or they really want to change it?
Yeah, I don't think they'll go back, I think it was, I said, let's have put in what they did put in without adding additional cost.
Needless to say, I appreciate the attention that this has received, but in the process, we've, we've compromised security. Uh, you know, someone walking at the, at the far end of my driveway, through the yard, couldn't see him that much, said guard, before we could. And all, and all of these, uh, light, uh, poles are on property, uh, are on the property lines, so there's space, you know, between the houses that that light would have shown down.
Is it in public right, public right way, or no?
Do you have lights still for safety?
Never, once you do a lighting district, it's not for safety, it's to light the streets. It's not, it's not.
It's not a security.
Yeah, it's not a security measure, this time, I.
But how, where's security, can there be enough lighting, they can find?
I'd say, I'd place in something on their individual properties on an individual basis, I don't think there's anything we, we can do on that, I mean, because for, to expend taxpayer dollars, taxpayer dollars to address the security aspect of it, then we all turn it up for across some entire township, where it's strictly the lighting districts.
Because, let me ask you, the lights that they had before, was the safety issue before occurring?
Well, the, the, the lights that were uh previously, uh, were previously installed by the individual homeowner, uh, as a, as a, uh, yes, for safety, so now you light the street up too, yeah?
Yeah, but once the lights are always a lighting district, now you're, now you're not.
When you make a lighting district, they take over.
I mean, could those lights have been grandfathered in before, if they hadn't been ch, hadn't been changed?
You say grandfathered in, I don't know if they.
I'm just asking if, when the, when the lighting, when the lighting district gets approved, approved, just to ch, just to uh, turn it into a district, and keep the existing lights, or does the language say that when it becomes a lighting district?
I think what it's, it's, what happens is when it becomes lighting district, you give up some of that individual control, and it becomes an actual lighting district with the control going to.
Well, what happened in this case, did the company say they could keep those lights?
They did, yeah, they, they initially sent, the, the first email was that it wasn't gonna, wasn't gonna change, or the, or that they couldn't establish because those lights aren't, aren't streetlights, but they said they would change them, and that's why they sent the communication out to find out what, what should be done with it.
But we have, as far as, for that, for kind of resolution on our end, typically, uh.
Well, I think a more practical, if you, if you want to do anything, I think you might check with A P before you do anything, but that's who it's through, right?
Yeah, A P does that.
I mean, certainly, you, in your practical problems to do that, I'm not sure that once they've, you know, taken the time and effort to out there, you're gonna be met with much, uh.
They'll recommend upping the wattage, and then that will go on the residents to be more, that'll cost the residents.
And that'll, that'll cost them money. At this point, it hasn't, if I'm correct, it hasn't cost them any money, correct? Yeah.
And the wattage is the same, there's no, no change in watt.
For some reason, there are, in a way, it's, the light spread on the individual pole light is narrow, so that there's dark spots between them where it's important to look.
Yeah, because they're designed now to shine down towards the road instead of immediate outward.
And they're like that, energy efficient, right, so they're not, right?
Why don't you let us check in the A P and see what else can be done, and we'll have Lisa get back with you and see what we can find out from that, because we're probably gonna be under the mercy of whatever they say that can be done or not done, so let us make that call for you and see what we can do for you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And make sure you two, uh, keep your phone number and Lisa's number. You do?
Okay.
Okay, does anybody else have any concerns, anyone just bring more questions?
Thank you, um, you know, two things, though, we, uh.
Please state your name and address for the sponsor.
Uh, Pete Jarokowicz, Minnesota, J, and Joanne.
He gets.
And Joanne?
Yeah.
And Julianne, yeah, he's.
It's J A R O C W I C Z.
It's seventy-five.
Seventy-three, forty-seven Elmers.
Yes.
Okay, uh, what happened is, uh, there was a complaint issued about some, some people who had chickens and a rooster, a piece of property that's about quarter to a third of an acre, and we understand a letter was sent, and we understand after that letter was sent, they have seven days to respond, and if they don't respond, they can respond here, which they are here. Then we understand the Board of Trustees sends another letter, which they have seven days to respond to, and I was wondering how, will that happen now, after today's meeting, or did it already happen, or?
Because you have to have an acre of land right now to have roost, I mean, not hen, hens and chickens, right, an acre of land?
More than.
You were told that, or, and you have to have five acres and a rooster, well, they have, they have bigger land with a rooster.
Oh, rooster.
And.
What are you talking about? By, which, which street? Pinecone. Pinecone, no, we just started on that, um, um. Yeah, that'll be at the next meeting, it won't be at this one.
Well, yeah, to explain the process, that, that a letter gets sent out, after seven days, Tom goes out and re-inspects, and if it's, the animals are still there, then he brings it to the board to declare it a nuisance, so that'll be at the next meeting. Oh, okay. It's all done per Ohio Urban Code.
Okay.
So we can't do it any earlier, or, so at the next meeting, if those chickens are still there, rooster?
Is it a rooster?
Is that the fourth line?
I mean, it's.
Oh, yes, yeah.
There is a rooster, and I don't know. Fairly big rooster, too.
Very big, oh, it's on, yeah, you can have.
Is this, is this quite your house?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, we can bring this. When we, at night, if the windows are open, you could wait in four o'clock, five o'clock.
What makes you have a rooster?
We all live with.
What's the hens do?
Well, they, they ignore, if you don't hear a lot, I really don't want chickens in my backyard, they're two lots away from us in the back, so, you know, it's still dark out, he's, he's out there crowing, so when I'm looking at air conditioning, windows shut, because they wake up, and they're not allowed to have them, I mean, we don't have enough property to have a rooster and chickens.
Is this more see for the record, will it just reflect it?
And actually, our, our blog article is looking, because I was thinking about nuisance nuisance, that's what the, it'd be handled, whatever, we would say, maybe, we're gonna not come into that yet. And then, I want to ask about, you know, you were talking about chickens before, um, what, what is that all about, like, how do the Plain Township people, do we get to vote on that, will your neighbors gonna have chickens?
No, for sure.
I don't want my neighbors to have chicks, you know, they're the property of chickens.
Yeah, for the, for the, can I just mark your first name?
Sure, it is, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, how we started speaking to this a little earlier tonight, essentially, there are two independent zoning boards, one's an appeals and one's a commission, commission board. The zoning commission board, which Mr. Ferrara oversees, provides the details too, so they can analyze, make a, make a decision. That board will meet, there will be a public notification that's, you know, posted, essentially, probably through the pod or your website, so there's some notification that occurs.
Oh, okay.
Folks will be able to attend that meeting from wherever they're at in the township, to be able to speak in favor of or against that, ultimately, that zoning commission board, then will take, make a vote, whether they approve it, reject it, you know, whether it's unanimous or split.
That's what I want.
Can't tell you, but, once the zoning commission makes their vote, it then ultimately comes to the Board of Trustees, and we've got one of three options, accept it, reject it, or accept it with modi, modification. I think collectively, whether it's chickens, or it's development of property, this board's been pretty conscientious to the collective public's feedback, feedback, I mean, it's way heavy, but, I mean, it's also weighed against what does the law allow? I mean, if the law says X, even though I may not like what it's gonna allow, I'm able to follow the law, regardless. So.
I just wanted to know the process was about that, do we get, I mean, how we know about that?
Yeah, you, well, public, Lisa, do you mind just chatting in real quick on the notification really? It would be in this situation.
There'll be a legal notice on the paper.
Yeah.
And do you want to, after the meeting, give Mr. Ferrara your phone number, he can call you when that meeting is, and, and the reason this is even coming forward is when I was in, um, the interim zoning director, that board asked me to come up with some language for hens, no roosters, because they were getting a lot of requests about it. Not that they were for or against it, but just to look at some language to even consider.
And when we say request, this board, just as at last meeting, got two, two requests, mostly the other requests have come with the zoning commit, zoning commission, so, I mean, we've asked for language at both North Kent and Kent Valley, and I just kind of look, I've seen how the city of North Kent works, concerns have come up during that, but until the zoning commission goes through their process, I'm not, I know myself, I'm not gonna say, say a word on how, how I stand, I, I weigh, it's a lot of the process to play out as it should, so we're not influencing in any way, shape, or form, yeah, I'll cover that.
And Tom, when do you think the meeting potentially could be?
It, I'm thinking it's gonna be October seventh.
Okay.
Uh, don't take me down, but, but I believe that'll be the date for the meeting.
For the zoning.
Just to ask a question, just usually, in these meetings, commission, the surrounding neighbors, you know, that, now, what do our.
Not for a zoning commission, because that, there's not a property dispute, or there's not a.
What if it's a property that's yours, or?
But that person's not asking for a variance, this is a change of the zoning language, that's what we do, that's why we do a legal act.
So this is one dollar, so to make sure that, that there you need to know.
Yeah, that's why you want to get.
So your biggest fight is, is a group to come into that, and, well, here's my concern with what you said, if you put a posting in the paper as compared with a letter to each individual that lives in the area, I, I would wager to you, you would get no more than twenty percent response, yet if you got a letter to them, and you're saying to your neighbor, your neighbor, your neighbor, hey, Dave, we want to put this through where you can have hens, I think you'd have a very different.
Sir, the challenge, the challenge in this is you're looking specifically at your immediate area, at your immediate area, this language is for the entire township, and to send up, and to send the letter out to every house, it is not cross-effective, so the public also has a responsibility to make sure to stay informed, through the legal notification, the paper, online, as well as, we have, we have a responsibility, you know, through our, through our social media, and our website, to make sure it's conveyed out through literally every cha, every channel, so that's why it's going through all this, the paper, and, you know, typically, that public service announcement, I mean, it gets to the local radio stations, too, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just feel, you know, sometimes there are issues that seem very mundane, but when you're talking about, some people say, oh, so what's these chickens, oh, good pass, how do we even know about?
Well, Tom, we've seen, we've seen, we've seen the turnout that you're talking about, because when there's specific property looking to be rezoned, whether it's, you know, of course, Chicago, everybody and their brother right around that immediate area, this people is here for, you know, an issue like that, so we totally understand the dynamics of this.
So if that's the point now, you have to have an acre of land to have hens and chickens, and five acres to have a rooster, if that, that's how it's.
It's because our agriculture legally exempted five acres, we can, by Urban Code, we have no statutory authority.
And then Eric has an answer on, our law director has an answer on his other issue.
It doesn't look, and feel free to step in here, Tom, but it doesn't look like it's a nuisance abatement procedure, it looks like it's a zoning enforcement procedure.
Yes.
Which is different, um, and lengthier, it's, that involves, if we can't get compliance volatility, that involves actually filing in court and all that good stuff, so.
So it can be a long, long out.
Oh, we've got some, yeah, depending on, and I will say, we have one brave Davis case, I won't mention any names, um, that has gone on for years, because we're just not dealing with, um, logic, but most of the time, we get people's attention.
But isn't that like a, it's not a law, I mean, it's not a law that you, right now, that you have to have an acre of land.
When you say law, it's a zoning regulation in Plain Township, so it's not an authorized code, you do have an enforcement procedure, but it's not like I can send our good sheriff's office out to, to enforce our zoning code, it's not that kind of law.
You get fined or anything?
Oh, they can get fined, yeah, absolutely.
So every, so after all this process, and they still have maybe, you know, in November, if they still have, don't they eventually get fined for the fact that they're not getting rid of?
Well, first, let me, let me help you with your expectations, to do something like this by November is never gonna happen.
I mean, for them to get rid of by November will never happen?
No, that's not what I said, to do something like this enforcement procedure and have a court order by November will never happen. Ninety percent of the time. Ninety percent of the time, we're able to get people's attention, and we're dealing with logical people who wanna do the right thing. We've got a good guy to talk to them that we send out. So, we might get something done very quickly. But there is a fine mechanism in place that, in fact, like I said, I just keep thinking of the one worst-case scenario, that we've fined thousands of dollars. And it just doesn't seem to matter. Now, that's one case in the twelve years since I've been doing this.
So they can get fined, and they just keep, they just keep paying the fine, paying the fine?
Oh, they could, they could pay, if this person doesn't pay the fine, in fact, they may have to look at other things.
Lean on their house?
Yeah.
If it accrue, if it accrued, if it accrued out, it reached a certain point.
We'd have to seek the authorities' help, and perhaps even. Yeah, it's crazy, crazy things, because we don't have some of the enforcement power that, you know, you would find.
But Tom had gotten rid of a handful of chickens. I mean, he has been.
So we understand, we can, and I don't want to, we can call due to noise. You know, rooster, just like a barking dog or something, you can do that. But, you know, we don't wanna go through all that.
Understood. And the hope will be that we're dealing with logical people, that will respond well to the procedures that are in place, and get a handle.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just give your name and address for this, we don't need to talk about, there's a microphone above you. Hang on, let me see one.
Do we all stand up?
Absolutely.
Whoever speaks, though, just make sure you give your name and address for this one.
My name's Paula Hertz, I live at 1024 31st.
1024 31st?
Yes.
And you said Paula?
Paula Hertz, H U.
You are, it's fifteen.
Yes, I remember speaking, I think I spoke this one.
Actually, it's booked on.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, I've never done this before.
Oh, don't be nervous, we don't worry.
I brought pictures on my iPad, may I review my iPad?
Absolutely.
We're, what we're here about is because I bought my house in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-three.
I'm really nervous.
Don't be nervous with us.
I bought my house in nineteen ninety-three, I love my house. This might be paid off here in a couple of months. And when I moved in, right beside me was a Lawson's, everybody knows Lawson's. And beside me was a dairy mart, you guys know where that is? Right across the street from Krause's Pizza.
Yes.
Okay. And then there were, used to be Hallmark Furniture, and then they had the, in the road there, the back, that's right beside my property, is, um, it used to be the license period. And takes cleaners, which is still there. And, but now, the license period moved over thirty street, and then it's, um.
It's all for charity.
I don't need to tell you. Okay. Ever since Lawson's moved out, it's just going downhill. The, the parking lot has not been paved since nineteen ninety-three. Okay? There's weeds galore that grows up, and I'm gonna show you pictures from April, and what it is just right now. It's like one of those gambling places, what's it called?
Skills games.
Skills games. Yes, yeah. We had to put up a fence, invest in a, a nice fence from. Because of the disgust that's over there. And then I have bushes in the front. They have a dumpster that sits out there, when I bat out of my driveway, I can't even see the street. When that parking lot is full, I can't even see the street. And right there is Martindale. People turn on Martindale, and they think they're in a, a speed zone to go down to, to Roland Avenue. And, you know, God forbid little kids are in the street. It's, it's, it's just hideous. So, one of these days, I'm gonna get hit. And, you know, anybody else that's trying to come to my house, I usually go out.
Are you directly behind the old Lawson's?
Right. Here's Lawson's, here's my bushes, and here I am.
Okay, so you're directly behind.
Directly behind it.
And you're completely.
I have, I have a same area as you, for the house and that property. That's, now, I just took this picture, now, this is me across the street. And I wanted, wanted to show you. Because when you get on the essexy to take pictures, there's a bullet hole, it's like in front of this wall. We don't have to go when you go see it. Yeah, and then right beside it, I guess there's, the laundromat moved out, and it's a dart's place. Okay, now, this is, I wanted to show you our neighborhood, this is my neighborhood right across the street. This house belongs to. Um, this is her house right there. Hi, this is a duplex, that's right, right beside me. Okay, and there we go. Oh, it's coming. This, this is in my backyard, behind my fence, and this is up against, this is, you know, I put this, and this is right now. Um, this is the dumpster that they just picked up. This, this guy that owns the, the, um, dart place, he, he, he rents out this dumpster to some carpet place. Well, these dumpsters are body closed, and this, this gambling place has a dumpster that I'll show you here that lost nine years. None of them aren't closed, and they're always open. So when we had all that rain, the stench was hideous.
How often do they clean it?
They, they, they don't.
We say clean up, they say, they.
They pick up, once, only once a week. But see, look at this, I was afraid, because that's open in the back. Well, no, that one was open, I was afraid when they picked that up, it was gonna all come out. Because if they drop anything, they don't pick it up. And I'll show you a piece of carpet that's been here since eight.
And it's because there's no, um, we have a big pass on back.
The fence is all broken down, look at all this stuff here.
See, I had bushes back there behind my fence that I had to cut down because of that fence.
Who's this here, is any of your?
That's me, see, that's my backyard, I put that fence back there.
That's pretty.
Yeah, that's my house.
That's behind you.
Yeah. Uh, that's beside me, it's right over there. And that other place was right behind me. See, is that the dumpster?
I mean, that from a line of sec, line of sec, line of sight.
I think that's a problem with the line of sight.
Right, they used to put that dumpster.
I think that's starting to move.
You know, here, here was, here's that big long dumpster in the background, and then they would put that short dumpster for the gambling place right here. Well, then those people that would come to get the long dumpster couldn't get in. And so now they moved it up and put it so. Who cares if the blocks are.
See, she's looking at, there's an open dumpster, all that junk there. Fence is broken, look at the dumpster.
This is, this is not a property maintenance. No, this is not abandoned.
It looks, I mean, that's just hideous.
There's a car that she's talking about there.
That will call that.
That's junk there, that's junk.
How long has that been?
Why would we need to call?
No, no, the dumpster, and this, Tom, I'll check the dumpster.
Tom, and get, Tom, we can get all that stuff. Well, how could we cut those weeds if it doesn't constitute fifty percent of the property?
Yeah, see, last year, they had somebody.
Still send them a letter. They'll still send them a letter.
They had somebody mowing the weeds back.
See what they're looking at, you can see the.
No, Tom, I'm gonna send them a letter.
Yes.
You guys see that? I can see.
I, I mean.
I would wanna look at that.
Well, especially, you still make the, you still make the investment.
Look at that, look at that.
This is a standard.
You know what I did, I actually called my name. Because it's gonna be my, it's up to me not to pay my property taxes, and I always pay them, but I wanted to put my property tax test out. So something's done about that, but they don't want to do that. But, uh, you know, it's like, I wanna stay there, that's my home, I love my home. I don't wanna move, and these people just moved in.
Do you get a lot of odor from the dumpster?
Oh, shoot.
A lot of dumpster, a lot of smell?
Yes.
That's not, I mean, that's a.
I broke back through.
That becomes a, a health issue.
Let me show you the picture.
It's not the odor, but if you're not picking it up, it's not contained, it's good, if it's not.
It's not contained.
I drove through, it went out, now.
No, it'll check out.
And make sure that.
Stuff's properly being disposed, it's, yeah.
Now, see, somebody put a, oh, a, a couch in there. It was there for months, because nothing's.
Who's over there?
Uh, Tom. Tom already cut everything.
Okay, see, this was in April. That couch stayed out there for months, and the guy next across the street, they showed you his house, he went and put it in the dumpster. Well, they came to pick up the dumpster, but they picked the couch up. Picked the couch out. And then there was just another couch in it just last month, and I said, great, that's probably gonna be here for months, but they did stay. And then, here's, I'll show you this piece of carpet. Yeah, here's that piece of carpet that you're gonna, still gonna find back there. And that was in April.
Yeah, that's not like.
And people will go and put all kinds of stuff in there, and then we have dumpster buyers that comment and tell you this. And then they don't put it back in. I'll let my other neighbor speak, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, just give your name and address. Did it, okay.
Another issue I have is, I have a seven-year-old, she's supposed to stand over the. Which terrifies me. It being open twenty-four hours, concerns me. Krause's built a bar. So, they're either Krause's or Nathan's Pub, intoxicated, go in there and hang out all night.
Gonna hang out where?
Lot of hole.
Lot of hole?
Parking lot of their party center. I have, I brought a video, there's empty alcohol bottles, used condoms. It infuriates me because I have a seven-year-old, neighbor's a three-year-old, across the street, Steve, he had a big protest about the bar Krause's. Little girl on kindergarten. The whole neigh, the whole area is from three to eight, nine years old. You know. Uh, the letter, they pull out of the casino, or skills games, fly down our road fifty miles an hour. So I'm terrified. I mean, if they're intoxicated, are they gonna come in our yard, get a kid? I know, yeah, there are front windows, if you go look now, I don't know if it's gunshots. There's hole penetration, and there's firework. Is it two windows? So I don't know what's, uh, going on there, but.
Lieutenant, or Detective, if we've had any complaints of shots or that, because literally since the old, that one, what was it?
Ogres.
Ogres and stuff, got shut down, we haven't, we haven't had any. I'm just asking, because we, we deal.
I don't know what has, what hit the blast, but they're broken, and they've done nothing to repair it, or cleaned up around there. I get off work, and it's a few before in the morning, and I pass it, I've seen them getting high. Something that concerns me, though, is, I went up and down Thirty First Street, trying to get more neighborhood involvement here. People wanted to come, write statements, but they seem afraid of this place.
Of the.
The owners, um, some are under the impression that judges nail it. The people working there, some of them, they have a feeling that it's mob involvement. And, so that concerns me, that neighborhood, my neighborhood is afraid to get involved.
Ma'am, Stark Night Sheriff's Office isn't afraid of it. You guys have any problems over there, please call our office, people getting high, tearing out a parking lot, we'll send guys down to address.
And, you know, when I hear, well, I'm afraid of retaliation, I'm afraid of retaliation. Majority of my street is elderly. What, you know, if it's open twenty-four hours, they go in there, they lose their money. Are they going to realize, hey, this is a terrible neighborhood, and start hitting our homes? I just installed a security system, never felt I needed one, but for the first time in my life, I live right there. Lot of women, lot of elderly.
You know, due respect, I think outside of what the sheriff's office takes very seriously, and just want that, this board is very serious about these issues. I mean, we like to raise that, to make sure an establishment over there is essentially closed because of exact, exact issues like this, we pushed it all the way down, we're almost with the support of, you know, data and information that's come from the sheriff's office. So, literally, I mean, in order for us to collectively take action on one of our friends out, Sheriff's Department, Department of Energy, contract with for our services, they, they have to be aware of it, and then likewise, we have to be aware of the pain we can push on. So, the zoning front of privacy somewhat limited, so, the board doesn't, will not take action if we don't know. But, you know, if we have information to work with, just like sheriff's office would, you know, we have something. So, I mean, it is critical that it's reported, you know, even if it seems tedious that, ma'am, I just called last night or two nights ago, the sheriff's office, somebody come, somebody come out. But, you know, if they're going out there and say this cracked, or spider windows, they find a monkey's been out there, that's gonna give some type of problem to cause to take, take this up further, because ultimately, I mean, the, as far as, I mean, their gam, their gambling facilities, I don't care if they wanna be like, or sign a skills game, or, or whatever. That really, that unfortunately, yeah, has to come through the sheriff's office, there's true or false, there's legal or not with it.
But I think, I mean, I mean, if this is a nuisance.
Tom, it affects theirs too, because they have to renew their license every year.
Yes.
So, I mean, that, that's something that we do not have to renew, if it's, if it's an issue.
I'll also follow the, 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 the.
Mike, Eric, do I, am I pressed by that? We don't have to issue the licenses that we issue. Well, we, we charge a fee.
We charge a fee, but we don't issue the license.
Okay. I stand corrected then.
Yes. One day, there was a guy laying, now, I have bushes in my back, pine, pine tree tree, so I don't have to see that, the building behind me. There was a guy laying back there against the building, and I mow behind those bushes, against the building with his sack and a, or bottles in a sack, you know, we'll call it, everybody cats, so, laying down back there. Like, oh, I can't mow my yard today, I'm not going back there and disturb it.
So, you get a call with a tax.
Yeah, and noted, and I didn't wanna go back there and.
But that's where you should pick up the phone, even all the sheriff's office, or call the township offices and let them know what's going on, so you can have a deputy dispatch people over there.
And, and I do have security lights, I have three mercury lights, one on the north, south side of my garage, detached, and one on the west side of my house. I moved up the house a couple of times. Okay, I, I will call, I had to call them one time because they were parked in my, I couldn't even get in my own driveway, because the people were over there, they were parked blocking, looking for it by the time.
Do not be afraid to call, even if you have to call one of us three.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you don't feel comfortable calling, call us, call these, and we have direct contact with our detective.
And the best part is, I mean, with respect to anyone who blew it out, saying, contacting, contacting us, whether that, that complaint comes from us, it helps, I'm gonna say, not eliminate, but it significantly diminishes the potential for somebody over there trying to, you know, reta, retaliation. Because, I mean, our address here is twenty-six hundred East, and, I mean, we're, we're posted on the website. We're, we're highly visible, and it helps to just further drive the sense of urgency.
Detective. Hey, if, if you need a car to come out, and you don't necessarily want them to know who called, you can always make an anonymous complaint. Our dispatchers, before they hang up the phone with you, they ask you if you want a deputy to contact you. And you just simply say no. You know, you, you just wish to remain anonymous. But the only way that we're gonna really make any headway on this is to know about it, that's number one. And all the, all the things that you're saying isn't surprising to me, surprise Sergeant Tedrick, Lieutenant Springer, none of us have heard any of this before. That's a problem. So if you see something, report it, and we'll get a car as quick as we can. And you don't, and you can remain anonymous when you make those complaints.
Yeah, when you call us, we don't have to give your name, so you can also, we'll just say, hey, resident, we don't say.
Can we get a car then, with leases or number or? Now, I did call a week or two, though, about asking for a sheriff to come and help with the speed. I mean, it is, it's, they named it Interstate sixty-two.
Where you get, do you have a time, do you have, is there a set time ahead?
Do you have a time? Do you have, is there a set time it happens? It helps you to know exactly what time that most of them are coming through there?
I'd say anytime after one-thirty.
In the morning?
Mm-hmm. And especially when they're getting off of work. Because what they do is, they detour. They detour down Thirty-first to go down Roland.
Yeah, sixty-two?
Yeah, so it's a detour.
Not to diminish the significance of it, because trust me, I think we can all agree, anywhere in the township, whether it's Kings Creek, modeling, Sheriff's Office, wherever, it's always an issue with how we typically go about it. We do have a speed buddy that we put out. I know it's a short-term affair, but what, what it does for sheriff's offices is to help quantify, statistically record, essentially. What's that? The vol, the volume of cars, the speeds, you know, what percentage is driving over the speed limit, what's under, it ties it back, the time window and so forth. That all being said, it helps, they get that information, it helps them better target controls, because obviously with finite resources in the town, in the township, they have strategic advantage, those to which they do, do a great job.
Yeah, I know it's absurd, but it's almost like residential neighbors just need speed bumps throughout the neighborhood.
Yeah, but unfortunately for us, we do it, we look into it.
I'm, I also live at Ten Twenty-Fourth Thirty-first Street, my name's Mary Look. Um, I, I am concerned about the alcohol and the drugs and all that. Um, my main concern is the appearance of the building. Um, you saw the pictures, um, the houses there, everyone takes care of their houses. What I wanna know is that, is the owner gonna be contacted, are they gonna? Now, because the back of that building is actually falling apart, bricks are coming out of it.
We will be going by model to inspect it.
Okay, and they're, like she said, she put, um, like a nice fence up, and they have this, I don't know why it was put up, the old fence. Both kids or other people have stepped on it or stepped on, and that's how they're getting in our backyard, because it's all picked down. But, um, I, I have seen people sitting in that, um, I don't know what they were doing, but probably was my thing, so. But other than that, it's just, it's so embarrassing, because everyone that comes to our house says, what is that? You know, and, and like she said, like the house, we think it's nice, it's our home, and look for us next year. And, so that's it.
We will get on top of it and address everything, try, try to address everything as quickly as we can. Um, but like, some of these issues could be a little bit lengthy to address. Issues like you're talking about, it's a simple phone call to the deputies, they'll be there right away. First, cleaning, cleaning up of the property, that could take a little bit of time. Some of the things we can get done quickly, if they refuse to do it, but other things, like with the aesthetics of the building, we're really limited in what we can do as far as the break, unless the building becomes structurally unsound, and, you know, then the fire chief, along with the zoning inspector, um, they can step in and maybe get something done.
But dumpsters, you, you'll be able to.
The dumpsters, well, because of site problems and things like that. First one, first one would be, we can address from a line of sight, the second one that's in the back, so it's gonna have to be coordinated with the health, health department, health department. I mean, there, there's individuals and entities that can be engaged to help mitigate. And we'll start working on these things right away. Because I've been down there and, um, I've seen some of the things I saw firsthand, so you're not overstating anything that you've told us.
Okay, thank you. Can we just come back for the next meeting, or?
Actually, if you, if you want to, you can leave your numbers, because I don't know if we're gonna have much done by the next meeting.
We can tell what Tom, we can tell what Tom did.
If you get your information to Tom, I think it's the best thing.
You can make follow. Or she, or she, you got, she has your card, she can call you and you can transfer over to Tom.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
It's all Lisa, and she can transfer you.
Keep me informed of what, what they put over there.
Or you can call on any of us too, so. Thank you for taking the time to come to me, because when you told me what was going on, that's why I asked you to come.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yes, thanks for that, thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody else that wishes to?
I just have one name, Susan. Um, I'm Sheila Lehigh, and I live right on the corner where Old Dr. Cecil used to be. Uh, I can respond to that house in nineteen seventy-two. And even though I'm not as involved as they are with all the trash and everything, but I still have a little, the little, uh, gambling thing going on there, but they're very, very quiet. However, there has been several drug busts going on, at the house that she lived in, there was a drug bust. We've had several drug busts on Thirty-first Street. And then there is more prostitution going on in my neighborhood. Yes. Not as, you know, it's not like a whole bunch going on, where the truck stop is, where Rite Aid is, which I was not aware of myself, but there is, the ladies of the lizard, whatever I wanna call them, that have been known to affiliate over there at three or four o'clock in the morning, and the ladies, I go to Lady Fitness, and the ladies were telling me that there have been several ladies sprawling out there in the parking lot being drunk, drug activity going on there.
Are you talking where the trucks park?
Yes.
Again, all of that is critical, that it's provided to the sheriff's office, so a Republican.
And I have not seen it myself, but that's what I was talking to him about, the neighbor telling him. And I walk my dog a lot, and because of our neighborhood, it used to be very, very sick, I can't even go out there pretty much at night, but I used to, because you cannot walk. But there is a lot of activity going on, and we never really had that much, I mean, I know it goes on a lot, I mean, no matter where you live. But ever since the little pot of gold moved in there, there's just too much activity going on. You know, and I have my, I mean, I don't have air, I mean, I have air conditioning, I like my windows open. You know, and you do have people come around knocking on your door and stuff and that, never really had that until they moved up there. More trash, and it's really gotten to the point, it's getting worse now.
I can tell you, I have zero use for any of those types of establishments in the township as far as.
Unfortunately, you know, and we wanna know why we can't close them now.
I think we've all been on record before about our conservative.
And they do smoke in there too, by the way, you talk about violation, they smoke in there. And I know firsthand, because when I lost my cat, which is funny, but I went in there and they were smoking in there, I wanted to put a sign up there, and they do smoke in there.
That takes unfortunate things off. Department, unfortunate thing.
Well, there's, there's a number that should be posted, there's somebody smoking in there, it's supposed to be, you know, posted.
They don't.
And they pay the fee and they go back to.
And I know you're saying, you know, some of the stuff you're saying, but when you call somebody, they, it's not.
I can assure you, anything that you control, the sheriff's office controls a half.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for telling me. Sheila, what's your address?
Eleven oh-one Thirty-Street, Northwest.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Anybody wanna tell us how good a job we're doing? Or how bad of a job we're doing? Because Joe's the only one, Joe's the only one who gets the good letters, I ain't asking.
Not tonight, Joe had a bad week.
Rob, let me put any more on.
I just want to ask you a question.
Joe's friends and family all got tired of writing letters.
You write out relatives, they all went back to Pittsburgh.
No letters.
It was a rough night for him the other night.
Yeah, and then you notice no letters for Joe, there were correlation.
Pittsburgh loses in Canton on Monday, on Sunday night, and no letters on Tuesday, right?
Okay, Conservative Trustee, Mr. Hogg has a couple of things. A couple of things I'm just gonna hit across, hit across the board for public purpose. Diamond Park is the largest volume township recycling facility. Public needs to be aware that it is not under any context a dumping station. Our staff, our staff to parched him, do a pretty good job along with Rod, Rod and his crew on mitigating that. But moving forward, moving forward, there are gonna be proactive measures put in place, that are being researched right now, that if somebody's caught, there's gonna be tickets and fines. So, for the sake of the public record, hopefully the paper, if you, if you know anybody that's dumping or you see it, report it, it's not acceptable, it's supposed to be a good hint. Yeah.
Just, just to be clear, whether it's yard waste, or as we've been told in the past, dirt, or grass, or whatever the case may be, it is illegal to dump there. We have yard waste sites open Monday, Thursday, and Saturday, whatever it is.
So, this is just fair, fair notice to, you know, summarize, summarize, there's John Q, John or Jane Q Powell out there for dumping. Pretty quick, there's gonna be a lot, lot of, lot of technique that's gonna be forthcoming, forthcoming. Um, outside of that, Chief, I just want to bring up, I know Scott Kelly is doing a phenomenal job with you guys, he's working on the smoke detector program that I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago in partnership with, with the Red Cross, I know that you guys are identifying some tar, some target areas. I know at the beginning of September, you guys are gonna go look out, go through the certain surveys and so forth. Is Ray House providing any type of early notification to those folks, so we can help incent folks to possibly be there when, sending folks through? Because obviously, you know, having the number of smoke detectors that can install for free.
We're coming up here in another week or so, we're gonna come through Red Cross, finalize all the details, so I'll check with Scott. I think there is or is not to be, and to suggest that there should be, so when you go to those residences, so, so be aware of.
Yeah, they're not, they're not caught, but as well, we get a better response, because if it enhances the safety and security, it's better, it's better for us all, it's normal, that. And then, uh, we're about September seventeenth, it's gonna be Star County Township Association meeting, because it's St. John, I'm bringing it up, because I am one of the. Yeah, that'd be six thirty, I am one of two large township representatives that have been asked to sit on a access management committee, committee. I've already got the information into Joe Chief, Lisa, um, Rob Skins, I don't know if I copied, I thought, I thought I may have carbon copied you guys on it. But this access management has to do with entry points on ro, on roadways and so forth. We have two hundred and seventy days as a committee, which is comprised of some large township, small township, uh, city, real estate developers, county engineer representatives, and without boring too much, the fact of the access management plan, it's something that the engineer's pushing with the commissioners, and they're looking for input and feedback from all of us to have a final plan to propose to the commissioners, and which go either adopt it in entirety, adopt portions of it, or reject it. The piece we all need to be aware of is if the commissioners adopt whatever the recommendations are in its entirety or its proportion, it will supersede anything from a township aspect when it comes to road access points. The predominant driver of this is more so the commercial complexes, you know, the example I was trying to give earlier in this meeting with the department heads is say for right now, you've got Rite Aid's got an entrance, Councilor Paul's got an entrance, Oakwood Square's got an entrance, Pizza Hut's got another entrance on the end, then there's another entrance for the backside of the town. Trying to do throttle these down to maybe one or two access points, especially, say, at Cross Street, you've got the business on the corner here, you've got the old dry cleaner, we're gonna have Dollar General, we've got the wholesale point. A lot of those entry and exit points are not lined up, so you're risking crossing in different points. It's intended to help improve safety and minimize the number of points, but again, I know from the fact of the control representing our residents, it's something that ultimately can triple down even into the allotments where, you know, hey, our driveways on one side of the street are offset on the other, well, you know, they may wanna get lined up, but they may, they may close shared driveways. Get a chance, just take a look, get the information. Todd Pox, Representative Jackson, I represent Plain, I've reached out to a couple of the other townsters, but they're, they're gonna keep that in, not pop. Star County Township Association meeting, so should you be available, it's just something to be aware of, because it could have a huge impact, the fact that it would supersede anything that. You know, right, so our department heads have given me a number of questions and stuff we're gonna send over, but if you guys have questions that come up later, let me know, or let Lisa know, and get them to heat, so. I just wanna make you guys aware of that.
That was it.
Sure. So, I have, so.
That's part of it, yeah.
I know. Hey, I never said I was short, short. Okay, there, um, we need the adoption of approval in the minutes of July twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, and I will move on those. Second. Discussion, hearing down the roll call, please. Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Yes.
Mr. J. Basis?
Yes, there is a need for executive session. Peter Myers, all by Plain County Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to adjourn to executive session seven twenty-six PM, this is regular meeting of August eleventh, two thousand fifteen, as authorized under Ohio Remise Code two one point two two G for the focus and consideration of one B, employment of a public employer official, one F, compensation of a public employer official, and forty, that offers with the law director of retained counsel concerning any or any authority.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing down the roll call, please. Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Yes.
Mr. J. Basis?
Yes.